And give you two seconds. We got a couple of registered speakers on motions. I'll let you know. Just on the motions.
Everybody, please rise. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. We'll now do the pledge. Pledge allegiance by the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Kennedy.
Here.
Counsel Leahy.
Here.
Counsel Mercia.
Here.
Counsel Milonazza.
Here.
Counsel Noon.
Here.
Counsel Cirillo.
Here.
Counsel Conway.
Here.
Counsel Elliott.
Here.
Is nine present.
I believe we have several moments of silence. Counsel Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would request that the chambers be docked in memory of Dorothy Linda Walazek. Dorothy Linda Walazek is a long time, was a longtime resident of the Petecaville neighborhood who passed away on Sunday, April 21st, at Lowell General Hospital. Dorothy was born in Lowell and was the daughter of the late Walter R. Smith and Lillian H. Wetmore Smith. She graduated from Chunsford High School with the class of 1965. She was married to Bruce Walazek with whom she would have celebrated their 43rd wedding anniversary on May 29th. Dorothy was employed by the Social Security Office in Lowell for 40 years before retiring in 2005. Besides her husband, she is survived by her son, Michael Walazek of Texas, a granddaughter, Nicole Martin, and her husband Jonathan Martin of Crown Point, New York, four great-grandchildren, a brother-in-law Nelson Brake of Tinsborough, Mass., a sister-in-law Eileen Wright of Ohio, as well as several nieces and nephews. Dorothy was predeceased by her brother Charles Wright and her sister Florence Brake. She enjoyed traveling and attending wine tastings and was a longtime poll worker at one of the polls in the Petecaville area. Dorothy Walazek will be missed by family, friends, and neighbors. She was 71 years old.
Thank you. Counsel Milonazza?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence and dock in chambers for Paul Kornitsky. Even though Paul was not from Lowell, he actually lived in Chunsford and North Andover, but he passed away on May 4th at the age of 91. We all knew Paul through the Merrimack Valley Housing Partnership where he was a volunteer for the last 26 years as a grant writer. Back in the 80s, he was the founder and president of the Interfaith Housing Corporation of Greater Lowell and worked with low to moderate-income families so they could realize the American dream to purchase, rehabilitate, and actually sell homes. So it's with great sadness that I bring his name forward. He's survived by his wife Rose Marie Worth Kornitsky and three sons, Steven, Peter, and Michael, four grandchildren, and one great-grandson. He did a lot to help middle-income people purchase their first homes. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Noon?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to request a moment of silence, dock in chamber in memory of Saray Wot Kun. Saray Wot Kun, of Drake, passed away on Sunday, May 4th, surrounded by his families and close friends. Saray was born on August 2nd, 1980, in Thailand. His family immigrated to Lowell, Massachusetts, and he attended Lowell Public School and earned his bachelor's degree from UMass Lowell. Saray was married to his loving wife, Ratana Yang Kun, in 2008. Besides his loving wife, he's survived by his father, Heng Po, his mother, Somnang Lun, his grandmother, Ha Ho, his mother-in-law, Ren Sau, his older sister, Sarah Kun Lang, employee with our police department and the city of Lowell, now working for Congresswoman Druhan, his brother-in-law, Kevin Lang, Rad Go Re, Kenneth Sau, Christopher Sau, and his two only, only two nephew, Gustan and Evan Lang. Saray was very kind and compassionate and loving. He donated book, clothes, school supply, built water pump, and 100 bag of rice to Cambodia yearly. His wake is on tomorrow at 1:00 at the Fay McCabe Funeral Home, and his body will be carried to the glorious Buddhist temple tomorrow at 5:00. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Mayor.
Are there any other? Please dock in the chamber. Thank you. We have now the minutes of the City Council meeting of April 30th for acceptance. I need a motion to accept the place of file by Counsel Elliott, second by Counsel Conway. We have the general public hearings that will begin at 7:00. We'll now go to some communications from the city manager. The first is motion responses. Shed Park Bicycle Race. Counsel Cirillo?
Shed Park?
Counsel Conway's motion.
I'm sorry, Conway.
Yeah.
Sorry, Counsel.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank you for the report, Madam Manager, and we did take a walk out there to see, making sure that all those areas that were damaged have been fixed. So I also brought the coaches out, and the coaches felt that the course was comfortable enough. So again, I thank you for this report. What I would ask is, going forward, if we have somebody, excuse me, from the city that would have some oversight of that, any, whether it's races or any other events, so that we don't run into this problem again.
Thank you, Counsel. We will certainly look at that and see how it can be controlled to avoid damage like that in the future.
And I'm glad that, one last thing, Madam, Mr. Mayor, sorry. One other thing is the fact that there was no money that was actually spent from the tax for this taxpayer, so.
That's correct. The organizers of the race were the ones who restored the track, not only in terms of restoring the track itself, but also did planting of seed and so forth, and did put in a great deal of effort to bring it back to what it was.
I thank you very much.
All set? All right, thank you. Next, we have traffic calming neighborhood business districts. Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mayor. I thank you, Madam Manager, for the report. The report indicated that there's similar issues in all this, the neighborhood and business district, also indicated that the volume of pedestrian and limited parking and vehicle speeding, those are the issues, and recommendations that the traffic calming study should be done, and I know that, you know, we have a lot of projects going on. DPD short of staff in doing that. One other thing was mentioned that we need some money, at least between $10,000 to $15,000 to do this study. The report also indicated, may I suggest, that the funding from Uber and Lyft fee annually, we should use that to do the study, and, you know, if you could report back within four, five months, because I understand that DPD staff is very limited of time to do a lot of the projects going on, so update report would be great on this.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. Yes, Counsel, we will get back to you. As well as the funding issue, we did get approximately $50,000 last year from Uber and Lyft. You know, it's a very popular service, even more popular now, so we will certainly look to that as a source of revenue directly dealing with the traffic and traffic calming studies, so, but we will follow up with this.
Yeah, if you could give us report, maybe in four, five months would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Your Honor. Next, we have the CPA. Yes?
Every question?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Through you to the manager. Any time on when we're going to redo the front of City Hall on Merrimack Street, we were supposed to maybe get rid of the lights, the flashing lights, and put some...
There had been a study, I know Natasha Vance is here, the traffic engineer, and she can address it. I know it had been a study done prior to Natasha's time, but...
Yeah, we actually, I don't want to touch this because the mic fell through last time, but we had requested money from Mast Works, and we weren't successful for, because we don't have construction funding, and we have a limited amount of design funding. So right now, the design is with our consultant, but we don't have a sufficient amount of funds to finalize designing the project because the scope expanded, because we don't have enough right-of-way to extend it the entire way to do the whole project. So as of right now, we're still in the design process and looking for construction funding. And basically, we need an economic development driver to try and find those funds.
All right. Do these, like, to put a detail out there, does that pay for itself? It just seems like lately, people aren't paying attention. They're going 30, 40 miles an hour in front of City Hall, so why don't we just put a detail out there and write tickets all day long? I mean, I mean, really...
We can look into, no, it is a dangerous, it's a dangerous street, and especially at certain times of the day. The sun is also a factor, especially in the morning, coming toward...
I mean, they go around here and drive down through the parking lanes. I mean, wouldn't that pay for itself?
We will certainly talk to the chief. I don't know, Natasha?
Yeah, I can ask the chief about that. It seems reasonable to me. It's a very unsafe area for pedestrians, as everyone knows.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We will look into that, at least as a stopgap or temporary measure or calming.
Anyone else? Thank you. Next, we have CPA eligible projects. I don't have the counsel for that. Madam Manager?
If I could, if I could, as chairman of the housing subcommittee, if you don't mind...
That's correct. It was, it came from the housing subcommittee.
It came from the housing subcommittee, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you for the report, and on behalf of my colleagues on the subcommittee, Counsel Mercia and Counsel Elliott, this is, this is good news, in my opinion, that we can take up to $4.2 million of the capital funds over the next five years. Thank you, Connor Baldwin, for the report, and actually fund it should we pass the CPA, the Community Preservation Act. As far as next steps are concerned, again, I would defer to the members of the subcommittee and the full council, if we wanted to send this report to the subcommittee, and at the same time, actually move the vote forward to schedule a public hearing for the vote, because, as we all know, if we decide to go down this path, and it makes sense based upon the cost, that if we did a 1%, and we would be able to get $1.3 million from the CPA fund, and as opposed to borrowing that money under the capital plan, we'd save close to $1 million just in interest payments over the 10-year, 10-year period. So again, next steps, could we refer this back to the housing subcommittee, and at the same time, bring the vote forward to schedule for a public hearing. But I see Counsel Elliott has his hand up, and I would defer to Counsel Elliott at this point.
Are you seconding the motion?
No, I was just going to second his motion.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Counsel Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And being on that subcommittee as well, this is a very good report because the news is something that we wanted to hear. This money, the CPA fund, would fund the City Hall building. It would fund probably the windows here, which we certainly do need, libraries, cemeteries, and other open space parks. This is what we would need, and so the money that we would need to fund cemeteries and open space, we've lost that all through these years, and we've learned that other communities have done it. And so we're talking about the North and South Common it would fund, Concord River Greenway. There's a lot of work that needs to be done in building, so that would be something that I would support. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a great report. Thank you, Connor. I like the idea of Chairman Milonazza's suggestions that send this to the subcommittee, the housing subcommittee, at the same time, schedule a public hearing, because we do not have enough time, because this needs to put on ballot November. So that, this is a great new. Thanks.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. We're happy to do that. I did just request from the solicitor, do we have to know for preparing the vote whether it's 1%, 2%, 3%? And it's our understanding we would have to know in order to prepare the vote, so I guess we'd have to hear from the subcommittee as to which percentage the subcommittee, and then to the, from the council is recommending, and then it's a matter of putting in that percentage so we could properly advertise for a public hearing. So...
So we should schedule a subcommittee meeting?
I think Mr. Slagel has something to add to this. I'm reading his lips.
So I also just wanted to mention, as we mentioned in the subcommittee, the exemptions that the council chose would also need to be in the vote.
Into the, in the vote. So we will hold off drafting the vote until we hear back from the subcommittee and then a vote from the council as far as the recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Thank you. I need a motion to accept and place in file.
So moved.
By Counsel Cirillo, second by Counsel Mercia. Thank you. Next, we have communication from the city manager, request out-of-state travel. Need a motion to adopt. By Counsel Conway, second by Counsel Kennedy. Roll call. Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Milonazza?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas. Next, we have votes from the city manager. Vote to clear various properties surplus and authorize the city manager to proceed with the auction process. We have the full reading, second reading by title. Declaring surplus properties located at 14 Rockdale Avenue, 51, 75, and 79 Cushion Street, 550.1, 542.1, and 548 Chunsford Street, 58 Montreal Street, and 20 Faber Street, Lowell, Mass., and authorize the city manager to proceed with the auction process for the disposition of said possibles, namely 14 Rockdale Avenue, 51, 75, and 79 Cushion Street, 550.1, 542.1, and 548 Chunsford Street, 58 Montreal Street, and 20 Faber Street, Lowell. I need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, if I, a motion to amend, to remove 20 Faber Street from the vote tonight, there's a number of interested people who actually want to, the church, Elliot Church, one of which, and I know that Counselor Mercia have other entity that also interests of convening as a group to have discussion on this 20 Faber Street. So the motion is to amend, to remove 20 Faber Street from the vote, but you can vote on the other two.
I need a second.
Second here. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support to remove 20 Faber Street off the list, because all these properties, and may I ask this question about these properties? I know on April 26th, we had an auction. These weren't those properties.
No, the auction was postponed also.
Oh, it was postponed, so we didn't have it?
No.
Okay, because I was wondering, if we had had it, I would like to know information about how much did we generate from this auction, and I didn't hear that, so I know why now that I didn't hear it, because of the fact that we didn't have it. But this particular motion that Counselor Noon made, and I seconded, I believe that there's people that are interested, like the Elliot Church is interested. I know people as well that are in the field of offering to support a detoxification center there. Could it be used for affordable housing? Could it be used for a community purpose, drop-in center, or whatever? So to remove that, we could study it further and have people come to the table. I think if we support this surplus, I don't have any problem with the rest of them, because then they will go out to auction. But if we remove them, like 20 Faber Street, then it probably would go RFP, Request for Proposal. What is the purpose of that? So I do support that motion, and I do support the fact that we could declare those property surplus. Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. We can certainly look at that as a standalone process. We did inventory all city and municipal uses. The school department also looked at it to see if there was any school need, and unfortunately, it didn't suit anyone's needs based on costs and so forth. But if there's a desire to, you know, tailor the RFP for this particular piece of property, we can certainly work with the council.
That would be good. But we'd still have to declare that property surplus tonight?
We would still have to do that, but perhaps the RFP, we can add other conditions in it that would maybe steer it in a direction that the neighborhood would like to see.
All right. That's good. Thank you, Madam Manager.
Counsel Elliott, all set? Okay. Counsel Kennedy?
Were you talking about the school building?
I'm talking about the old Elliot School.
The Elliot School.
20 Faber Street. Sure. Thank you.
So I need a motion to adopt as amended? We'll need a roll call on the amendment. Okay. Roll call on the amendment? Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Milonazza?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas. Now we need a motion as amended to adopt. By Counsel Cirillo, second by Counsel Conway. Roll call. Counsel Kennedy?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Milonazza?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Cirillo?
Yes.
Counsel Conway?
Yes.
Counsel Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas. All right, we're now going to go back to the general public hearing. 3.1 Loan Order, $343,399,220 to pay costs of designing, constructing, equipping, and furnishing addition and renovation project at Lowell High School. Now we're going to open up the hearing for all those who want to speak in favor. Before any speaker comes up, we did have a number of letters of support. I just want to read the names of some of the groups that supported, are supporting this high school loan order. Cambodian Mutual Association, Coalition for Better Aka, Community Teamwork, Gilbert Campbell Villas, J. Linehan Community Foundation, Greater Lowell Chamber of Commerce, John Day Credit Union, Lowell Community Health Center, Lowell Housing Authority, Lowell Plan, Gallagher, Gallagher, and Kavanaugh, Mary Ann Bastide, Lowell head of Lowell High School, Housing None Project Learn, and the Washington Savings Bank. Anybody speaking has five minutes, up to five minutes. Please give your name and your address.
Okay, thank you. My name is Brian Brusso, and I'm the president of the Roofers Union of New England.
Excuse me? You mind make sure you print the name on the...
I did.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So Brian Brusso, president of the Roofers Union of New England, and I'm an affiliate and delegate of the Merrimack Valley Building and Construction Trades Council. We represent over 1,000 Lowell residents in our construction trade unions and several thousand in the surrounding community of Lowell. There are many of the members of the trade councils, men and women, and labor representatives here tonight in support of the high school, which is a tremendous endeavor that the city of Lowell is going to take on, and we're all very happy about that, but also very concerned that it be built under the terms and conditions of a project labor agreement that would guarantee the city.
Excuse me? The issue tonight is just the loan order, okay?
Understand.
I understand your issues, but the thing is, it's a separate issue, we have to be filed with a separate motion.
Okay. Well, in regards to the loan issue then, we'll come back to another hearing for that matter.
Thank you.
In regards to the loan, I would, I would ask and recommend that this honorable body at least consider and look into the due diligence of committing funds to a feasibility study to consider building this under the terms and conditions of a project labor agreement. I believe that it's in the best interest and the most prudent interest of the city, the taxpayers of the city, the community at large, and this honorable body. This is one of the biggest undertakings of a high school currently in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts with state and local funding. It's a tremendous investment, and it should be protected in every way possible, and a feasibility study is the proper due diligence to take into consideration for this project. That's my request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The perils of coming up to the podium.
That's it. We need a new podium.
Again, everyone...
Yeah, maybe someone can fix it while they're there.
Yes.
Is there somebody in the room that could help?
Hi, I'm Judith Durant, 50 Viola Street. Mayor Samaras, you read a list of people who had sent a letter to the council, and one of those was Kavanaugh and Gallagher and Kavanaugh. I have Michael Gallagher's letter here. He couldn't be here tonight because he's with his wife giving a scholarship to a high school student who's going to go on to nursing school. And if I may have your permission to read the letter, I think it has some very poignant facts in it. Dear Mayor Samaras and members of the Lowell City Council, a half a century ago this year, an area graduate school of education conducted an extensive study of Lowell's public school building thought. That study revealed that there was a critical and immediate need for new technologically outfitted schools in Lowell, as virtually all of the existing school buildings were considerably aged, with one even dating back to the administration of President James K. Polk. It would be two decades before the critical need began to be met in Lowell's late 1980s to early 1990s school-building program, which led to 14 new elementary and middle schools completely transforming pre-high school education in the city. There was a persistent myth that back at that time, there was unanimous support at the city council for floating the bond which enabled the city with substantial state assistance to build its 14 schools. In truth, though, a number of counselors were on the fence, understandably wary of the long-term financial impact on the city. As the then-chair of the citywide parent council, I distinctly recall knocking on counselors' doors to drop off many hundreds of postcards from public school parents and others throughout the city, encouraging each counselor to support that hugely important vote. Ultimately, the council took the courage, the courageous step to float the bond, and the rest is history. Thirty years later, we are now at another historic moment, the once-in-a-generation opportunity to recreate Lowell's signature public school, Lowell High School. The initial drawings are truly extraordinary. The MSBA has voted to provide the state's very substantial funding assistance, and our elected leaders are now in a position to show their strong support for this long-needed effort, the most exciting public project in Lowell's history. As a downtown building owner and resident, I am naturally concerned about the financial impact of your vote. However, like many of my fellow citizens, I also recognize the critical need for new modern high school. It makes sense from a dollars-and-cents viewpoint. Investing considerable resources in temporary fixes would be demonstrably unwise. It makes sense from a marketing viewpoint. What better way to keep and attract young families and businesses? And it is the right thing to do, especially for a community which justifiably takes great pride in its pre-K to PhD promise, and one that is vying to become the first UNESCO learning city in the northern hemisphere. There is a saying about teachers, that they affect eternity. You never know when their influence may end. In a very real sense, we now have the occasion to dramatically and positively affect literally tens of thousands of Lowell's future high school students for many decades to come. How often does a counselor get that opportunity? Strong, enthusiastic, and united support from this council would serve to underscore the importance of this project and further motivate those charged with making this all happen on time and within budget. The above cited history reminds us of the perils of delay and division. In the annals of Lowell's nearly 200-year history, there are a number of momentous junctures, and this is one of them. Thank you for all you have done to get us to this point. I now very respectfully ask for your vote. Michael W. Gallagher. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to read that. Do I need to sign this paper here?
Yes. Is that for me? I don't think so.
Mayor Samaras and members of the city council. For the record, my name is Jim Cook. I reside in Mansion Drive in Lowell. It's not a mansion. And I have been involved...
And I have been involved in city development for roughly forty-two years, my fourteen years or so at the Planning and Development Office and twenty-nine years at the Lowell Plan. And I can't think of any project that would come before you that would have more of a significant impact on the future of the city and future generations to come than the vote you have tonight. This is the vote that I believe people will remember this council by and this administration. As I said, we've had a number of votes happen in the past, whether it was building an arena, building a ballpark, a number of significant votes, but they pale in comparison to the effect this vote will have. So I urge you, please, to support this project tonight and move this project forward. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi. It's been a long journey to get to this point, and I wanted to thank all of you, city manager, the council, school committee, school building committee, and so many others. It's been a million pieces and a ton of hard work to get to this point. Obviously, I asked that everyone votes yes tonight, and we take the next steps in this project as quickly as possible. I'd like to make a quick, few observations. First, it's worth noting, I think it's hard sometimes when you're in Lowell and everything is talking about Lowell, but it's worth noting how different the narrative is here versus many of the other cities and towns that are working with the MSBA right now. Yes, we had a very public and at times contentious debate over the type and location of school we wanted to build, but at no point during the entire process has there been debate over whether we should fund this project and move forward. We had two sides, Downtown and Colley, that were both truly committed to boosting public education in Lowell, two sides that should both be proud of their advocacy, their commitment, and their passion. I really can't stress enough just how rare that is. In cities and towns all over the state, many of them much, much wealthier than us, activists are fighting just to improve the funding for their school projects, and it can be hard just to get people to show up and care. That's not a problem in Lowell. We're passionate, we pay attention, and we care about public education. Second, none of this happens in a vacuum. Public education has been under attack for years, and the strain is showing. At the federal level, it's under siege by an education secretary who fundamentally does not believe in public education. At the state level, we have a governor who pushes charter schools and some state reps that refuse to commit to an overhaul of the foundation budget. And as the council and manager are well aware, at the local level, we're being presented with Sophie's Choices on a weekly basis. Is it better to cut pre-K or adult education, library aides or middle school banned, bus transportation or building maintenance? In this environment, MSBA funds are one of the only ways that we can really inject money into the system. And let's be clear, this is a lot of money. It's $214 million from the state to rebuild and expand the high school, funds that will go to other cities and towns if you vote against this loan order. While we may not agree on everything, I know that every member of this council prioritizes Lowell students and taxpayers over those in Weston, Lincoln, Worcester, name a million towns. Lowell students need these funds, and they deserve the school that will be built with them. Finally, I just want to touch on a trait that I think everyone on this council shares. No matter your background, your views, or your goals, you have all chosen to serve on this council because you believe in public service and you believe in this city. I have an enormous amount of respect for that service and a personal perspective on it. The last three generations of my family served on the school committee or council. I know exactly what they would all tell you because I've heard it many times, including from this gentleman. When you leave this chamber for the last time, and you have a chance to take a breath and look back, you won't remember any of the times that you voted no on something, or the fights over budgets, or zoning, or dealing with the media, or the million other headaches that you all deal with all the time. You will remember what you helped to build, and you'll see a Lowell High School campus that competes with the best urban schools in the state and beyond. Every spring, you'll see hundreds of new graduates that are ready to change the world, and a few of them will reflect on the advantages they were given, will hear the same call to public service that you did, and will take the baton from you, take their seat in these chambers. That's the legacy that you will leave. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Nicole Berner. I live on 60 Hawthorne Street. And thank you. My husband and I moved to Lowell fifteen years ago, and over the years, our enthusiasm for the city has just grown. There is so much going for the city. We've got UMass, we've got Middlesex Community College, we have the Spinners, we have the National Park. I can go on and on. The list goes on. It's exciting, and the energy and the enthusiasm right now in the city, as well as the potential, you can feel it, and it's exciting. I do feel that it's fair to say that over the last decade or so, this school district has suffered due to the instability in leadership and underfunding. As a parent with two young children in the school district, the public school system, and as an active community member and taxpayer, I find this very concerning. Our public school system is the last and the most important ingredient that will make this city a great city. The city needs to deliver a fully funded 21st century learning experience for our most important citizens, our children. In order for the city to keep and attract new families, we need to improve our school district as a whole, improving our facilities through the New Lowell High project. Taking the school district to the next level is the key to taking our city to the next level. Our community is at a very critical juncture, and at this time, my fingers are crossed for great superintendent as well. But more importantly, I'm here tonight to support and ask you to support the new Lowell High project plan. In the 2018 report prepared by the Collins Center, UMass Boston for the city here, on page thirty-seven, it states, quote, "According to the National Institute of Building Sciences, more than other building types, school facilities have a profound impact on their occupants and the functions of the building, namely, teaching and learning." Quote, "There is sufficient research to state without equivocation that the building in which students spend a good deal of their time, learning does in fact influence how well they learn. Numerous studies have indicated that students in poor buildings perform less well than students in functional or acceptable buildings. As a collective, we need to change the culture and direction of our school district. I feel we need to reinstate confidence, making all of our public schools in Lowell safe, equal, and the first choice for all students and families. By investing in the New Lowell High School project, we are collectively investing in the futures of our youngest citizens and our city. Thank you all for your time, and thank you all for your service."
Thank you. Thank you. My name's Brian Martin. I live at 168 Hubby Street, Lowell, Mass. But the record show that Counselor Conway is the only one wearing a Lowell High School tie this evening. I'm very disappointed in our mayor. Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Kennedy. But the record show that Counselor Kennedy and Counselor Conway have the Lowell high tie on, and that you can buy one on Merrimack Street for $25. I picked it out tonight, but it had, we'll say, a major stain. Okay. And Arthur Anton, a Lowell High graduate, will be happy to clean it for you. Okay. I figured we'd have some fun, right? Counselor Mercier? At whose expense? I want to thank the city manager, city council, and school building committee for keeping the project on track and presenting a first-class project for the students and families of Lowell. That's been a lot of work. The community appreciates it. This is a historic night for the city. I wish I could vote. I'm jealous. One that will be remembered for years to come. Lowell High School has such a rich tradition dating back nearly 198 years ago, welcoming students from all over the world, beginning with Ben Butler in the first class, through students like Milton Bradley, Teresa Lu, the first African-American student in a public high school, Cardinal O'Connell, Paul Sangus, Marty Mian, Laurie Trahan, our new congresswoman. Since its inception, every high school project has been supported by the Lowell City Council, from the first building on Anne Street to Coben Hall, the 1920 building, the 1980 building, the 1995 addition, and this evening deserves the same support. I ask the council to support the bond and simultaneously support homeowners who pay taxes and need this new facility to maintain their investments. Real estate professionals will tell you that first-class public school facilities and programs attract young families, and this project is a perfect example for the community and our homeowners. Real estate Ray Booton, a Lowell guy, spoke to me about the need for first-class facilities, how our students deserve a safe and fostering environment so they can thrive and succeed, how young families consider job commute first, the next priority of public schools. The National Realtor Association recognized that nearly 50% of millennials view schools as their top priority in home purchasing decisions. Finally, I ask that everyone consider the promise and hope of the next several generations of students who will benefit from this vote. The Lowell High School students are fantastic. I can attest to that. You can't find any better. And they share the same dreams as every alumnus. This vote is for our young people and your belief that they deserve the very best. Thank you very much. Anyone else speaking in favor?
Keith Rudy, 28, Hallie Road, Lowell. Sorry, Brian, I have a tie tonight. I am a former Lowell High School graduate. I never thought I'd see this day. Not that I complained when I was in high school, but our gym used to be the OANX at the high school, the freshman academy. So to see these children today in our future, and the vote that you people are about to take tonight to give us a top-quality, state-of-the-art facility is unbelievable, and I think it's time. We've kicked the can down the road enough. We put more Band-Aids on this building next door. I think we kept some of the hardware stores in business, just going down and getting a bucket of nails every day and a can of tar to put on the roof. So it's time. And I ask this also that, and I know Mr. Mayor, you said this is not the time, but our money's got to be best used by using qualified, top-notch tradespeople, and they are the building tradespeople of this great Lowell. And I think we need to emphasize of putting Lowell residents to work. We have a lot of qualified tradespeople from Lowell out of work, and I think we need to emphasize putting these people to work. Thank you.
Anyone else speak in favor? Madam Superintendent?
Janine Durkin, Superintendent of the Lowell Public Schools, and extremely honored and proud to be here this evening. I had nothing planned to say, but I feel compelled that if I didn't say something, I would be remiss. So I certainly would say to you that I have been part of this project since the inception, since the visioning of what a new Lowell High School would look like. And I can truly tell you that this facility is going to take our students to the highest points that they can go. Our students deserve this. I am grateful for your consideration tonight, and I know that for our students, you will make the right choice. Thank you.
I want to thank the superintendent for all her efforts in actually putting the school system back together again, but also for the support of this high school. Thank you. Ms. Littlefield?
Yes. And as a former teacher in the freshman academy under Mrs. Durkin, she deserves all kinds of praise. Mine is very short. Tonight is a milestone in a long process to bring Lowell and its students a new high school, a process in which a number of us here played a part. And I am excited to see the plans get to this point, and I trust the council will support tonight's loan order to move a new Lowell High School further on the road to its completion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other speakers in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Anyone speaking in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. Open up the floor. Madam? Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a very important vote, as speakers previously said, one of the most expensive votes that I will have taken in all my years on the council. Although this option was not my choice and plans didn't go my way, the goal ahead of us all at this time is to move on and create, through this vote, the best educational environment for our children to which every Lowell High School student is entitled to and deserves. My vote this evening will be to support this project and the future of each student, and support this project with the hope that this project be on time and on budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would just like to move approval of the loan order.
Second.
And on the loan order, I would just like to say that it's taken us a long time to get to this point, but I do think that it was a process that we had to go through. I think that there were people that had differences of opinions over the past couple of years, over the location more than anything else. But I do think that we sit here tonight, and it's time for everybody to just come together with this. And I think that this is a proud night for Lowell. This will be an A1 high school when it's completed, and it's expensive, but I think it's well worth it. And I think most people in the city believe that it's well worth it. And I do think that in terms of residential property values, and for a whole host of reasons besides the students and the quality of education that they will get, that this project is, and this high school is important for the city in general. So I would just urge my colleagues, and I expect the vote to be unanimous this evening, but I'm happy and proud to be making the motion to support this loan order. Thank you.
Counselor Sorilla?
And I also would like to thank everyone who worked so hard in making this happen. It was just such a strong, strong outpouring of support and hard work, and so I just wanted to thank everyone who worked so very hard on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a proud graduate of Lowell High School, class of 1972, I am certainly pleased to support this loan order this evening. As my, first of all, thank you all for coming down here this evening. It truly is an historic vote. I believe the process, which will be continuing obviously under the leadership of city manager Dunne-Hugh, working with our design team and with our soon-to-be selected construction management company, we're going to keep this project on track and on budget. As previous speakers have said, having a first-class public education system, and I know years ago I was involved with the Lowell Model for Educational Excellence, which laid out not only the structural needs of the public schools, but also some of the programs that we needed to put in place, which we've made some great strides. But I think our facilities have been neglected unfortunately over the years, and I think that this vote this evening will certainly give us a first-class high school. I have two grandsons that are planning to go to Lowell High School. In fact, the first one will be in the class of, freshman class of 2021, when this new school opens, and we're very excited that he'll be at that high school. And I think that the process that we've gone through has been rigorous, to say the least, but I think at the end of the day, I think we're all on the same page now as a community, putting education as a priority. So again, I plan to support the loan order, and I certainly encourage my colleagues to make it unanimous. Thank you.
Counselor Newm?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I join my fellow counselor to thank so many people. Start with Madam Manager's and her team, the MSBA for their patience with us, the superintendent of school, Janine Durkin and her team, my coach, Brian Martin, and his team. I echo all the speakers about the importance of this investment that we're going to make. As we guide our student through the Lowell public school system, we hold this treasure in our hand, the hopes, the dream, and the possibility of not just this generation and future generation, but the generation who will make this moment possible. With this vote, we will put together, we put into motion something truly epic, a state-of-an-art high school on the site of the first racially-integrated school. high school on the site of the first racially-integrated school in the country, a school which has accepted students from all races since its founding. A unanimous just vote from this council will both embrace the prize of our past and promote the aspiration of our future. I'm looking for a unanimous vote tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I want to thank all the speakers that came up. I think that they certainly put everything on the table and I think explained how important this project really is and what it's going to do for our students and for the city. I've had a unique opportunity to spend over forty years down Lowell High as a student, a teacher, and housemaster, and I've seen so many different stages of education at the high school. And I think that when we're looking at going forward here, I think it's going to be the state-of-the-art project, and it will be a model for the entire state. And I will say that I am very proud to make this, support the loan order. And I think I'm in kind of a unique situation because when I was on the school committee, I voted to start, one of the six votes to start the project too. So again, I think from beginning to end, and I think it's going to be, again, a great, great opportunity for all our students, and they certainly deserve it because as people like Brian Martin and the mayor, Bill Samaras, and myself, we certainly have seen these students on a daily basis and realize what an incredible resource they are for the city. So again, I congratulate all the people involved and the hard work that has brought this project to this point. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? Counselor Elliott?
Well, I just briefly want to say a couple of words as well. You know, since the beginning, there was a difference of opinion, but I agree with one of the speakers. One central theme that was not taken by either side was that we need a new high school. And it was clearly about cost, and will continue to be about cost, how we can afford it. But secondly, it's $214 million from the state is a huge amount of money. We need to renovate the high school. It's long overdue. And I agree, one thing, this council and school committee, we don't compromise on education. It's the foundation and the basis of everything that takes place later in life. So I'm going to support this. I do think it's important to move forward and to continue to work to build the best high school that is cost-effective, knowing the magnitude of it. So it is exciting. We're moving forward, and I look forward to taking this vote.
Thank you. Counselor Leahy?
Sure. Yeah, I want to thank all the speakers that came down tonight. I want to thank everybody that put all the work into it, the volunteers, the administration. This was a long process, and we're here tonight. We're going to vote for this. Proud to be here, proud to hear all the comments from my colleagues. And our kids are going to have a number-one high school, the best one in the state. And we are also proud to have all the laborers here. So if you're from Lowell, hopefully you're going to have a hand in building this high school. So thank you for coming down.
I also want to issue my support for the adoption of this financial plan. If you'll allow me to stay at the podium to, I put these, I put my thoughts together because this is very important to me. You can imagine why. This is one of the most important votes that this or any city council has made or will ever make, as far as I'm concerned. The issue dwarfs the building of Lashar Park, Songas Arena, or any other major development that our city has undertaken over the past few decades. This is about our students. This is about our future. As the former headmaster of Lowell High School, I have followed these plans very carefully. They have been outspoken, have been outspoken about its location in the downtown. This downtown location has and will continue to create a level playing field for all students, rich or poor. This high school is literally equidistant from every section of the city. With that said, the plans for this high school are truly impressive. These plans will create an urban lifestyle that will offer to our students and teachers the tools to be successful in this ever-changing world. A successful vote tonight will ensure that our students receive the best education possible, have equal access to all programs, both those that are offered at the high school itself and the many other learning institutions in and around the downtown. Lowell High School has been an integral part of the fabric of Lowell. It's part of our history. It's part of our future. The advice they have for the administration of Lowell High School is that they continue the synergistic approach that expands our relationship with UMass Lowell, Middlesex Community College, our partnership with the Lowell Plan, and many of the other businesses and organizations in the downtown that creates a unique vision and opportunity for the city of Lowell that surpasses anything that a suburban campus could offer. Fifty years ago, Pat Morgan had a vision and saw the potential for the downtown. Lowell, when few others did, he saw that education and economic vitality go truly hand in hand. The original goal of the National Park effort was to create an educated city. Over the past decades, as the downtown has revitalized itself, Lowell High School has thrived at the center of it all. I see no reason to abandon that vision today. For our students, Lowell High School is a true microcosm of today's world and tomorrow's future. This is all in keeping with the goals of Lowell becoming the first UNESCO global learning city in North America. Lifelong learning is at the core of what makes Lowell a special place, and Lowell High School is that very core of that learning. I envision this state-of-the-art high school campus being a location for lifelong learning, a true community center that will be able to offer continuous education at all levels, thus improving the quality of life for all our residents, and most assuredly to the students of Lowell High School. So I give my support to this high school. Thank you, everybody. We have the motion. Roll call? Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Millenozzo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
I want to thank the city manager and her team for all the work they did. I want to thank the Lowell City Council for its support and its effort. And I want to thank all of you for coming here tonight in support of this project. It's important to our future. Thank you, everybody. Madam Manager, would you like to say anything? Counselor? Okay. All right. Next, we have, we'll just hold one minute. I also want to say that this, we have to refer this clerk's office for twenty days to finalize this process. All right, next, we have vote acceptance of Chapter forty-four, sixty-four payments of bills in excess of appropriation. I'm going to open the hearing. Anyone want to speak in favor? On this motion? Favor? That portion is closed. Anyone wants to speak in opposition? Opposition?
Sorry, we couldn't hear you.
That portion is closed. I need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Counselor Cirillo, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Roll call?
Excuse me?
Sorry.
So we're going to be voting on this motion to allow for payment of bills incurred in excess of the appropriation. Does that mean in any way that this council is going to be paying the bill?
This is just accepting the statute. This isn't, we would bring back before the council any specific bills, but it's just authorizing the council to do it under the statute.
Okay.
So just accepting the terms of the statute, but we haven't put on the agenda yet which bills those would be and how they were going to get paid.
That's fine. Thank you.
Counselor?
Yes.
Roll call? Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Millenozzo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas. All right. Back on the agenda, five point two, vote authorize the city manager to execute purchase and sales of parcel A and B from post six sixty-two, Foreign War, to the city. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to enter into purchase and sale agreement with the veterans of Foreign War, Walker Rogers, Post six sixty-two, to purchase property to which parcel A and parcel B, Lowell, within the Air City Industrial Park Urban Revitalization and Development Project area, and to consummate the purchase of said property. Need a motion to adopt? So moved. By Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Any comments?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I followed this issue very carefully because I have a fondness for the VFW post six sixty-two. They made me an honorary member, so I'm, and I didn't say honorary, I said honorary. So there is a difference, but I did call them, and I want you to specifically hear this, the parties have agreed to exchange portions of land that would further each other's objective. That's the whole thing. That is perfect. They're very happy, and I want to thank you, Madam Manager, for having this come forward because we're doing everything we can to help them, so that's fine. Thank you so much.
It has been a long time in coming for them.
Yes.
Finally, it's been worked out.
But it's here. It's here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call? Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Millenozzo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas. Okay. Next, we have vote authorize the manager to execute project scope and budget agreement and project funding agreement between MSBA and the City of Lowell High School project. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager to execute the project scope and budget agreement and the project funding agreement by and between Massachusetts School Building Authority and the City of Lowell, relative Lowell High School project. Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Counselor Conway, seconded by Counselor Cirillo. Any comments? Roll call? I'm sorry, Counselor Mercier?
I just have a question. We all know what Kamira is, Lau, what's Hmong, what is that?
We're not on that yet.
Country in Southeast Asia as well.
Oh, it's a country?
Yeah. Well, that's the language.
Oh, it's a different?
I think the name, it's part of, I thought it's part of China, but it's another language.
I never heard of it.
Or maybe it's closer to India. We can get back to you.
That's okay. I just never heard of it before, but I'm foreign anyway.
Go back to the other motion. I need a roll call. We have the roll call. We got the motion and roll call on item five point three. Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Millenozzo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
That's nine yeas. Okay. Next, the resolution. Resolution support Congresswoman Trehan's effort urging U.S. Census Bureau to include Kamira, Hmong, and Leo, waive the full reading, second reading by title. I support Congresswoman Trehan's effort to urge U.S. Census Bureau including Kamira, Hmong, and Lau among the language supported by the Internet, self-response, and the Census Questionnaire Assistance Options for the 2020 Census. Need a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
By Counselor Cirillo, seconded by Counselor Kennedy. Any discussion? Roll call? Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Leahy?
Yes.
Counselor Mercier?
Yes.
Counselor Millenozzo?
Yes.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Mayor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Cirillo?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
Yes.
Nine yeas. All right. Next, we have report of Subcommittee Environmental on Flood Issue Subcommittee of May seventh. Any report? Counselor Cirillo?
Hi, yes, thank you. In attendance was Gunther Wellenstein, Solid Waste Recycling Coordinator, Jim Troop, DPW Director of Administration and Finance, Counselor Elliott, Senator Kennedy, Counselor Conway, Counselor Noon, Counselor Mercier, and Counselor Leahy. So Gunther put together a fantastic portfolio of, we had three different items on the agenda, current, future, state of solid waste recycling in Lowell, and the second one was solid waste recycling fines and violations, and the third was chapter two seventy, waste and recycling ordinance changes. And he put together this great presentation with regards to a single stream, it has what we, showing the single stream audit for the city, and he put together a slide of all the different contaminants that we have that are showing up in our recycling bins. And let's see, there's a lot here, and how he has some new stickers that he is putting on our barrels to show what is recyclable and what is not. And we should have all received these in our, these two new stickers in our mail. And let's see, there was a lot here. And he went over the solid waste and recycling fines and violations, and how we've rejected two hundred and fifty-three carts that were filled with contaminated waste in our recycling bins. And then we went on to changes to the chapter two seventy, solid waste and recycling ordinance because the last update hadn't been for ten years, and a lot's changed in ten years as far as our recycling is concerned. So out of that meeting, there came a, two motions, and the first motion was by me, and it was seconded by Counselor Elliott. Motion to have the law department work with solid waste and recycling to update chapter two seventy, solid waste and recycling ordinance. And then a second motion by Counselor Elliott, seconded by me, and that motion was to request the Subcommittee and Council, request the solid waste and recycling department produce to the Subcommittee and Council, they provide information on the various fees. I think, do I have that right? Michael? I'm just, the wording?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. It was a really robust conversation, and we are going to continue this conversation because I know I had a few more questions for Gunther and Jim Troop.
it sounded like you can just appeal it and not pay it.
That, I'm not sure. I know one of the proposed changes was to, in lieu of a ticket, to have an education, you know, you could not have to pay the ticket if we change the ordinance and attend an educational class. So, it would help homeowners learn rather than, you know, pay a fine. But if there continued to be disregard for, for the ordinance, then, then the fine would, would appear. As far as it escalating, I'm not certain about that. We can, we can look into that to see if it does. It's a $25 ticket.
Right. It, it sounds like it should be part of the discussion because it sounds like people just brush them aside and never pay them. So, if we made it like a parking ticket, you have to pay it, and the earlier you pay it, the less you pay.
And I, and I think that was one of the recommendations when Gunther started talking about this, is to, one, to give people a break at first, to become more educated about it, but then to have some kind of teeth, because it is costing the city a tremendous amount of money for disregarding the recycling, you know, requirements.
Okay. And then, second, there was, so we had talked about staffing. So, with this year's budget, can we consider some sort of a maybe floating position where someone could give Gunther's office some help and maybe work into whatever inspectional office may need them? So, we, I think we can all agree that his office is understaffed, so can we just take a look at that, see if there's any way we can do a floating position that might help out?
We can look at that. I mean, we, we did have the two grant positions to help on this point, and that is to go and check the barrels and also work with the residents and to educate. So, we did have those two grant-funded positions. I'm not sure exactly how long they're going to last, but that's something he got, you know, partway through this fiscal year, which was at least some help. And we can talk to inspectional services. It's one of the conversations we've had, if inspectional services out on the street, so we'll have those conversations as well.
Okay. And then the last point I wanted to make, you know, having these drop-off days and the, the rate between the large barrel and the small barrel, I just think we need to make it easier on ourselves. Take a look at, I don't think we've raised the fees for 10 years or longer.
More.
So, yeah. I mean, my bill, I think it's the same as everyone else. For $126 a year, you get your trash picked up. So, that's a great bargain. So, we should either just, you know, have a, either a price for the large barrel, a price for the small barrel, and give an elderly dis, senior discount if we want, or, you know, work it out somehow. But let's just keep it simple, look at the fees. I think if, you know, if the cost went up a little bit just to cover our costs, it looks like we're paying about 3, 3.2 million, right, above what we charge, so.
Correct.
There's some room there to be flexible. I don't think anybody's going to squawk if you pay a little bit more, because, I mean, $125 a year to get your trash picked up is quite a bargain.
We will look at it. I mean, the, obviously, at once upon a time, it was expected that the fee was going to pay for the cost of picking up the trash, and that, of course, was in the days when we didn't pay for recycling on top of trash pickup. And so, that's something we will have to look at and go forward as well. So, you know, fees as well as the barrels and how those will be priced in, in the fines.
Right. Because I think if we do have, to go back to the floating inspector maybe, or another inspector's position, you know, obviously, the less we pay in fines, it's going to, there's a trade-off there. So, we're going to be paying less in fines, and then maybe, you know, the other fees don't have to go up as much. So, one's going to balance the other out. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our city manager. Remember last week when I talked about trash, and I talked about how your waste management is not picking up the barrels in the different schools in the parks? Well, somebody heard me in your office, and they called, and the barrels were picked up, let's say, at the Star Close School, which, that was one of the areas as well. But because there were trash in bags, they never took them. They left all the bags there. They took all, emptied all the barrels, but they did not take the bags, which was loaded with bags.
Okay. We'll, we'll have, we'll look into that. I mean, they are supposed to pick up the barrels on a regular basis, but we will look into the, if there's trash in the vicinity, whether it's the schools or our own DPW.
Thank you so much.
Counselor Elliott?
I don't have much to add, except it was a good report. It was a good meeting, and we just recessed because there's so much more to discuss and, and work on. You know, when we adopted this container system and then the recycling system, the incentive was to get larger, larger recycling bins because that would take more waste out of the waste stream, and recycling at that point wasn't costing us as much, if anything, and what we recycled was going to be a revenue stream. That's not the case anymore, considering the, the market, if you will, for recyclables has, has plummeted. Has there been any change in that, Madam Manager, in the last, I think it was five or six months ago, where some countries stopped taking them?
China.
China.
China stopped taking all of the recyclables, and, and there's very few, and so, it's, it's kind of twofold. It's more costly, and there's less of a demand, just, you know, across worldwide for recyclable materials. So, that's affected the markets for, and, and so, the, the waste management have to pay to get them, as opposed to getting money back for, for the recyclables, which was the case once upon a time. So, no, it hasn't changed. We did have language in the contract. If there were market changes, we can go back and, and look at what those are. But right now, it still has not gone in the right direction. And when we couple that with the contamination, it's made our costs very, very high.
I think that's the biggest factor that we learned at the Subcommittee is, prior to this new contract, there were no penalties for contamination. We're not contamination, we're talking monitors, rugs, you name it. And it's, it's unfortunate, but as the chairwoman mentioned, fines have been issued, excuse me, citations have been issued, second notices going on. If you don't pay them, it's not, you can't walk away from it. So, I, I thought that was, that was important to know. So, and, and there's 5,000 barrels emptied every day, and the more we recycle, the better, the less we have to pay for it to dispose. So, I, I think that we'll have more meetings and more information to come. We did ask for information, and, and that'll be helpful, is, it's, it's expensive. And, you know, the answer to, I just don't think it's to raise, it's just not to raise fees. We have to continue to separate and recycle what is not, and get that contamination out there, out of the waste stream, which is, it's, it's $15,000, you know, a month. So, I think it'd be enforced, important to educate as well as to continue enforcement. So, thank you.
Counselor Millenozzo?
Thank you. It was a good report. Unfortunately, I was not able to be at the Subcommittee meeting. My question has to do with barrels that are left out after they've emptied, and whether or not any talk or discussion was given to, as Counselor Leahy said, maybe having a part-time inspector go around and, and dealing with the issue of barrels just being left out for day after day. So, that's something that we've all been called about and talked to about, so.
And we can come back with some recommendations on that topic. I know it's come up here on the council floor, certain individuals who are elderly and can't bring their barrels upstairs, and that's an ongoing issue. So, we will, it, it, that's a tough issue, but it's one that we need to, we need to deal with. And again, on anything, whether it's contamination or leaving barrels out, if there's no enforcement, there's no incentive. So, we want to try and make it clear that these, these requirements will be enforced.
Thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also learned from Gunther Wellenstein, who incidentally takes his job very, very seriously. He's like dogged at it. And he talked about the fact, well, someone asked a question, is it possible that we could have an area where you could drop things off at a reasonable price? And he said that there's really no land available to do that. But I want to say that many, many times during the year, they, the solid waste, and Gunther Wellenstein, they have a particular day set aside on a Saturday where people are not working that can go down, and for a minimum, minimal fee, I think it's even $2 to put certain items there. They did like 190-something just the last time. And I know that because he's always given me a notice. I have that app where he reminds me of all things. So, there's really no excuse, but there's a certain element in this city, God forgive me, and it isn't just this city, it's probably every town and every city in Massachusetts, where you've got people that just don't want to stay in line in a, in a car, or they don't want to pay the $15 or $20, whatever the fee is, and they use certain areas of the city as a dumping ground. And I called your office, and I talked about, to privately, to see if we could get an inspector. I talked to Eric Slagel, as a matter of fact, about Chambers Street, about Kinsman Street, about Crosby Street in the South Lowell section of the city, back central area of the city, that people are just dumping mattresses there, couches there. So, when we say that there's no open space, people are using along the riverbank on Chambers Street, it's just unbelievable, and it, it turns my stomach to say that this is a beautiful city, but there's a certain element of people that are just making this city a disgrace. And I'm not blaming anybody here, I'm just trying to get this off my chest because it's, it's troubling to me. Thank you.
Counselor Cirillo, then Counselor Millenozzo.
Hi, yes, thank you. I had spoke, I had, I had asked Gunther with regards to if he has enough manpower, because I feel that education about what goes into the recycling bin and what does not go into the recycling bin will be a huge help. And, and I, I feel that having, maybe having the floating inspector, like Counselor Leahy had said, to, to just try and, and help aid Gunther and his staff in, in getting things done as far as education. I think that's important. Thank you.
Counselor Millenozzo?
I just want to compliment Gunther and his team. Hazardous Waste Day was last Saturday, and we're involved in cleaning out a house, and we brought 56 years of hazardous materials and a cost of $76 to dispose, which was absolutely a reasonable fee. But we had an 8:30 appointment between 8:30 and 9:00, and it went flawlessly. So, I mean, they really do do a very, you know, a very good job. So, kudos to his team. And he is understaffed, but kudos to the team.
Well, he does do an excellent job, and he is dedicated and committed. And the app that you refer to, Counselor, people should look and put it on their phone. It's just a wealth of information that just comes right to you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, I need a motion to accept this report of progress and adopt the motions of the Subcommittee by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Conway. Next, we have petitions. Lapoli Companies, Thondeck Exchange, requests installation of overhanging signs at 165 Thondeck Street. I need a motion to refer to the Law Department for a report and recommendation.
So moved.
By Counselor Kennedy, second by Counselor Cirillo.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some, about a month and a half ago, or so ago, Sal Lapoli and his crew hosted a tour with the city council, the city manager, members of the planning department, and we had a tour of Sal Lapoli's property. And when I say no expense was spared in that facility, that is the old factory outlet building, he's turned that place into a mansion for people that live there. If you moved in there and lived there, you'd never have to leave. He's got a gym, you name it. No expense was ever spared. There's a restaurant going to be there. And wait till you see the outside. I'm telling you, this, I was so impressed, and it's just going to be so beautiful. As it is inside, so will be outside. So, to say that he's simply asking for this, and I know we won't, oh, I'm sorry, are you speaking?
We're from Lapoli Companies.
Oh, so you know what I'm saying. It's beautiful. So, thank you very much.
Well, so, do you have anything, any statement you want to make?
Joe Bevelakwa from Lapoli Companies. We appreciate the kind words, and if any of the other councils would like to take a tour, we'd be delighted to take you through the building.
Yes, Madam Manager?
Yes, just in follow-up to Counselor Mercier's comments, it was an amazing tour, and Mr. Lapoli did offer to host other tours for members of the council, and we will be happy to coordinate that.
And, and you know if you live there, you're going to be safe, because security is second to none. I, I just had to brag about it, I'm sorry.
No, one comment. Scott Moreau with Lapoli Companies. We actually are putting a police substation in. The police came by last week. We put a glass enclosure for them, so it's really going to be nice. And just a quick thank you to the building department and everybody that helped us get our CFOs, and we had a lot of residents from Perkins Loft, as you remember, and they've been waiting for a long time. So, we can't thank the city enough for, for all their help.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have motions by the city council. Counselor Mercier?
Were we supposed to vote on this?
You voted.
Did we vote already?
Yes.
Oh, all right.
Request the city manager to find ways and means to have a Spring, have Spring Street paved. Need a second?
I can.
Counselor Noon, Madam, Counselor Mercier? Is a registered speaker?
Oh.
Louis Luna?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Louis Luna, and I live at 11 Y Street in Lowell, Mass. I currently own 17, 19, and I'm working on 21 Spring Street with the city right now. And Spring Street needs a lot of work. I think not even paving, putting paving on the potholes would help it. Right now, the street looks like this. I have people that get dropped off by non-emergency medical transportation, that they get stuck, and they call me as a landlord to pull them out. So, I was asking the city councillors and the manager if you guys could help me with the street. I, I purchased the, the building in November of 2018, and I'm doing a lot of work over there, trying to fix the whole neighborhood, and things are looking real nice. I just need a little help with the street. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Louis more or less said everything, but this is a motion to put Spring Street on the paving list. The street is or could be classified as an alley, but whatever you call it, it contains people who pay taxes, such as Mr. Luna. He bought 17, 19, and 21 Spring Street. He cleaned up the neighborhood. He cut the shrubs down. He cut the overgrowth, and he's bringing the area back to the livable, enjoyable existence that it should have. It was not a good area, and probably because of that, it was left to the elements, and no one really cared, and probably because it was considered a very tight alley. But still, traffic goes by, and, and this is, it is not an accepted street, and I'm, and I don't intend to make it so. So, we could not use Chapter 90 funds to be used on this particular street. So, if we ever decided to pave it, the money would be coming from the city's capital fund. So, if I could find a way to help someone that's trying to beautify a certain area of the city, I think this motion is important to show people that if you're going to take a dilapidated area and fix it up and clean it up and do the right thing with that area, we'll do our part to help you. So, that's why I have it on the paving list. And notice, I didn't say repaving. Is it even paved? It doesn't, you would never even know if it was even paved, but when you say fill the holes, I don't think there's...
It looks like this right now.
Yeah, but I don't think this hut top was ever there, but anyway.
Yeah. That tree hasn't been worked on in a lot of years.
Yeah. So, thank you. It's much needed. Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Next, a motion by Counselor Cirillo. Request the city manager to direct the proper department to look into the options and how to improve the lighting for the entire length of Riverwood.
It doesn't, you would never even know if it was even paved, but when you say fill the holes, I don't think there's...
It looks like this right now.
Yeah, but I don't think this hut top was ever there, but anyway.
That tree hasn't been worked on in a lot of years.
Yeah, so, thank you, it's much needed. Thank you, Louis.
Thank you.
Next, a motion by Counselor Cirillo, request the city manager to direct the proper department to look into the options and how to improve the lighting for the entire length of Riverwalk from Boot Mills to La La Chapin.
Second.
By Counselor Noon. Counselor Cirillo?
There's a registered speaker here too as well.
Okay.
Joe Radwich.
Joe Radwich is here. And this was a great lead-in, talking about safety and beautification of the city. My name's Joe Radwich. I'm 35 Riverwalk Way, which is the Renaissance on the River, and I'm on the Board of Trustees there. I'm here representing the homeowners association. So we have 153 households that are there. We've got some folks here with us tonight. We've got a bunch of petitions here, or just people couldn't make it, we collected a bunch of things there. And we're literally on the Riverwalk. So if you know where Aiken Street Bridge is, where those two mill buildings, so when you're standing on the Riverwalk, and I'm referring to, you know, it goes from Boot Mills to behind the library, you can reach in and touch our windows. You can look into our units. So we, this is, you know, something that we live in every day. And we understand this is a city. And so we have a problem, you know, with some, we understand it's a city. We have problems with homelessness and crime and things like that. And whether you're in Sacramento or El Paso or here, there's no silver bullets, there's no magic wands, but things are either getting better or they're getting worse, usually. And the Riverwalk Way used to be spectacular, probably one of the shining, you know, points of Lowell. Past year, 18 months or so, it's actually gotten worse. And there's been a few things that have been going on, which I've been talking with Counselor Cirillo, so I really appreciate her putting this forth, and it's been an issue, you know, there. The first is we have a pretty significant increase in the homeless population living underneath the Aiken Street Bridge, you know, kind of behind the ballpark and whatnot. And it's certainly up, you know, and it's growing. And we had a big bump in 2016. And when that happened, we had more car break-ins. And so then we worked with the City Sanitation Department, Dave Lele at the time, and some other folks, they came, took care of it, and had dozens and dozens of stolen bags and pocketbooks and things like that that they dragged out from underneath the bridge. It hasn't happened yet, but we're a little worried about that coming, happening again. And then there's also like a health or just, you know, livability issue going on. So there's more garbage. You walk along the walkway, there's garbage, empty clothes, needles. When you round the corner and you get under the Aiken Street Bridge, sometimes the stench of urine is so powerful that you, you know, you had to hold your breath as you go by. We've come around the corner and had a guy in the middle of the walkway defecating. You know, right over there is, is, this is where we send the tourists, but that's what's been happening. Fortunately, we had flood levels, you know, come up recently, as you all know, cleaned out a lot of the stuff, but this is just going to resurface if we don't, you know, take care of that. So that's one of the things. Perhaps more concerning is there's actually been an increase in crime and suspicious activities. So there's been an increase in young men wearing the same hats, t-shirts, things like that, kind of patrolling the area. Behind one of our buildings, it actually ended up on our building last year and the police used our video cameras to do it. There was like a gang initiation of a mugging that happened there. We have folks, and they're usually young guys, they pull into our parking lot, disappear into the dark areas of the Riverwalk, come back 15 minutes later. We try to get them towed, we try to call the police, but I mean, that 15-minute window is a little short, so we have that going on. We have an ongoing relationship with, you know, the police department, Captain Kennedy and whatnot. He comes over and he says, wow, this Riverwalk Way is really dark, this is a place where a lot of nefarious activities would go because nobody can see anything and we don't patrol this, so we have that. And he says, and they didn't plow it this winter. So our folks couldn't even get there. The Riverwalk Way basically wasn't plowed after every storm. So he says, it's difficult to get back there and it's dark. And the most grievous thing that happened, which you all know, is in February, there was a murder, literally, from me to you, you know, outside our windows, piles of blood all over the place, the fire department had to come and hose it down. And it's, these two individuals knew each other, understandably, but that just indicates to us, this is the population that we have walking up and down the Riverwalk Way. This is why folks in our buildings don't want to go out at night. They say, well, I love it during the day, but once it's dark out, I'm not going to go walking on the Riverwalk Way. And that shouldn't be the way, you know, that it is here, in our opinion. So our request to the city manager, city council, you know, overall, is improve the lighting of the entire length of the Riverwalk Way from boot all the way. There's gorgeous lights, they're decorative, they're terrific, but some are broken, some are full of bugs, so that's, you know, they don't give off any light at all. There just needs to be some, you know, general city maintenance to make things better. There's some spots that probably need some lights, you know, that are missing, so we'd like to see that. So take care of that. You know, increased patrolling on that would be great, you know, from the police. And the police are always great. Whenever we have an incident, they show up and then they patrol like crazy for two weeks and then they have other issues and they have, so I don't know if there's anything we can do there, but we'd like to see them there all the time, not just after an incident, not just when it gets warm and folks are out, but more consistently going across there because between the lights and that, it would probably make things a lot better. And then address the homeless population living under the bridge and around it. And it's always a problem, we know we're going to have to deal with that, but it would be nice to do something there, clean it, help them. I don't know what that, those, those solutions are. So that's what our requests are. And something I want to tell the city manager and, you know, mayor and the council of who we are making this, this group, this community, who's coming to you and saying, we want this? And I'd say this, so one, we're 153 households, we're probably 300 people, you know, there were all very few single people there and we do have some families, so there's a lot of us there. We have a good working relationship with the city and the departments, and whether it's the Parks Department, you may or may not know this, but there's a city park next to us that we split the costs with and maintenance and take care of those things, so that's a great relationship and we think it makes the city great, looking to enjoy tourism. We work with the Historic Commission because we have an historic building, so anytime we need to do something, there's a little bit of discussion with Steve Stowell, of course.
I'll just need you to wrap it up.
Okay, really quick, we support downtown businesses, we own offices downtown, we support the Acre Meetings, we volunteer for Eforaw, we're on the Lowell Community Foundation, we are on the Lowell Conservation Commission, we support the Lowell Public Library. We are fully engaged Lowellians. Yeah, we don't have a standalone house in Belvedere or the Highlands, but we are invested in this city, committed to this city, and to be honest, we feel left out by this city. We're on this little island surrounded by UMass, but we're a whole neighborhood unto ourselves. And the police district changed, it was like, we used to be part of the Acre policing, now we're part of downtown things, but we're still part of an Acre Meeting. And partly, we feel that we're sort of, we're an island and we'd like some support with the issues that we're facing and with us, you know, generally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor.
Hi, yes, thank you. So I did put a hard copy of Joe's letter from the Renaissance on the River on everyone's desk, so everyone should have a copy of that. And my, this motion and also my next motion, but I'll talk about this motion first. This, this motion obviously came from speaking with Joe, and thank you so much for being here tonight. It was very important for you to be here. And this is, this is about a community in Lowell that, that they, they feel that they are left out and, and that's, that doesn't work for me. And so if we could look into ways of improving the lighting on the Riverwalk, I think that that would be so very helpful and wonderful and that, that would make this area of Lowell vibrant again. And so I think that this is very important. And thank you.
Counselor Conway, then Counselor Kennedy.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I applaud Counselor Cirillo for putting this, this motion on. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, this has been an issue, I think, for, oh, for, for a number of years, I've heard, you know, periodically on the, on the floor of the city council, where we have people living on the banks of, of the river. And I'll be quite frank with you, and maybe I'm being naive about this, I have no idea why we cannot have them removed. Because I, it, to me, it doesn't make a lot of sense. And I realize people have talked about, you know, you have to distinguish whether it's the, whether it's the city of Lowell's property or whether it's the university's property, whatever it may be. But you know, if, if, if we went down to the Child's River and decided we want to put a couple tents up there, how long do you think we'd last? I don't think we'd last long at all. I think we'd be removed immediately. And I don't understand why we're not, why, why we cannot, again, this might be a naive question, but why can't we remove these, have these people removed?
Thank you. So, so this does get somewhat into the next, the homeless task force and sustainability, sustainable housing that we have embarked on and are working full force on this issue. To your point, Counselor, as far as having the legal right to go on private land and remove something, we don't have that right if it's on private land. However, we do work with the private landowners. And so, for example, there were two camps over the past winter that Mast Dot, it was on state land. We worked with Mast Dot, they came and they did clean out those spots. There was one behind a house on Wall Street that was actually Pan Am's land. Pan Am, we went back and forth with them on a number of, of times, what we ended up, they went in and they cleaned it, we had our own DPW people taking the stuff and cleaning it. So we do clean up these sites, to your point. This is a problem that's plaguing Boston and everywhere, so it's not unique to Lowell. We are working, we will come forward, as I promised when we formed this task force. This is obviously a complicated issue, but it's not one that, you know, is impossible to address. Other cities have addressed this successfully and so we will be coming forward on that. So, so we do not, and if something's a health hazard, we do send people out, we do have response teams that talk to the people who are there, we have other outreach teams that try and find out why they're out there and, but they are given a warning that the site, if it's our land, that the site will be dismantled. Unfortunately, it pops up somewhere else. This is an ongoing problem. So we need to work and do a better job, when I say we, I mean the entire Commonwealth of getting people into housing. And so that's a subject matter of what we're working on.
I, I think, I can certainly see how, how these homeowners are obviously very upset about the situation because they're living there, they're paying the taxes, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. And you've got people in there, you know, they have to worry about whether somebody's going to break into their car or the house or whatever it may be. Plus the fact is, the sanitary conditions, that, that's bizarre.
Absolutely. So we will, we will look into, we have a map of where these are, we're working on this, we're working with our police department, we're working, I mean, this is, this is a priority, just so you know.
And I didn't mean to step on the, on the second motion because I'm sure it'll be described in a little bit more detail, but I'm glad that we're working on it. And again, I know that it's a very frustrating situation, not just for, as you said, not just for this city, but for, for many cities. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the, the motion, which I commend Counselor Cirillo for putting the motion in, I think it's a good motion, but the motion speaks to the lighting.
Right.
And it sounds like the lighting is, there's two phases. One is, we probably could improve the lighting, that is, add additional new lighting there, but it also seems by the comments from the speaker that some of the lighting has either been, you know, is, is been damaged or needs to be, you know, I think we, we probably could quickly, like in a week, improve the lighting situation there, which I think probably would improve the, the overall atmosphere.
We will look into this and find out, I, I know, speaking with Diane Trad, there were new LED lights put in there not too long ago on that section of the Riverwalk. And maybe they're not bright enough, maybe some have been broken, so we will certainly have, you know, our folks go out and look at that and see if it needs to be brighter lighting or more of it. You know, we'll, we'll look into that.
So, you know, maybe they're not brighter, but it also is probably a section where everybody doesn't notice it, so that, you know, you can have damaged lighting and it, it doesn't, it doesn't come to the city's attention right away. So maybe if we do improve the lighting and, and repair any damaged lighting that's there, another part of it should be that there should be some sort of a patrol or, or, you know, just to look at what type of maintenance needs to be done.
Yeah. And, and Anna, and we'll get this full report to you, but I know Chief Richardson has said that the police department has ordered a new vehicle that can actually get down onto the Riverwalk. It's a state-of-the-art vehicle with cameras and, and all. I think they are expecting delivery very soon. If they haven't taken it this week, it will be very soon. And this is, again, something through the, I believe, the law enforcement trust fund, but it's, you know, cruisers can't get down there. The unfortunate incident that was discussed, where these individuals went down knowing each other and got into some kind of dispute, presumably over a drug deal gone bad, but, you know, when cruisers can't get down, but this vehicle will be able to get down there. So it can get into alleys, it can get into the Riverwalk. So we will have the police department come in and talk about that as well and work with the neighborhood.
And just finally, my, my last comment would be that, you know, when this area was developed, it was, it's, it's a desirable place to live, people like living there. And you want it to stay that way. And if it, if it, if it turns out that it's not that way anymore, that's hard to get back, a lot harder to get back than it is to hold on to in the first place. So I think it's worthwhile putting some attention into that area as soon as possible.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
No, that was a point I was going to make, the city's invested, but these people have also invested in that area and most of us can remember what it was like before, before the transition, so I think it's important. Glad you're on top of it, it's a priority. I was just going to say, you mentioned it's a neighborhood, it is a neighborhood. Are there regular neighborhood, do you have regular meetings that, like, we have a, oh, you go to the Acre Meetings?
Yeah.
If you do have monthly meetings, perhaps you could get in, let us know and, you know, we, I'm sure some of us would start attending that, those meetings. Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Leahy?
I was just going to say, last night, Captain Sullivan spoke about the new ATV that they got and they're going to be patrolling, so the effort is being made by, you know, the police department and your office to get down there, so.
Yeah, and it has a whole lot of, you know, investigative aspects to this vehicle that I think it will be, it will prove to be very useful in exactly this type of situation.
So based on Counselor Elliott's statement, if you could get that information to the city manager, when your regular meetings are, if you wish us to attend, that information will be translated and given to the city councils. Okay? Any further discussion? Next, we have a motion by Counselor Cirillo, request city manager to provide the city council's progress update from the homeless task, homelessness task force. I need a second.
Second.
By Counselor Kennedy, Counselor Cirillo.
Hi, yes.
Do we have a registered speaker?
Same speaker.
Same speaker.
You're registered to speak on this item as well?
I'm registered to speak.
All right. All right. You've got another five minutes.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you again, Joe. We did review this pretty thoroughly and, and I'm just, the reason why I requested the update for the homelessness task force is because of the issues that are happening at the Renaissance on the River. And because it is, it is, it needs to be a priority, it needs, and, and so, so I would, I would like to have an update as to where you're at in, in the process, so that we can update the, the community and let them know where, how, how, how far we are along in this. So thank you.
Okay. Next, we have, by Counselor Cirillo, request mayor present to the superintendent schools and school committee a letter requesting the fifth graders to design shirts for the council members to wear during the cleanup day and to forward a letter to the fifth grade principals upon review and approval. And a second by Counselor Elliott. Counselor Cirillo?
Hi, yes, thank you. So that the community at home knows what exactly I'm requesting, I would like to read the letter that I would like to have the superintendent and the school committee review and approve. So it's, "Good afternoon, principals. This is city councilor Karen Cirillo and I am writing in hopes that your fifth grade students can help the city council in their upcoming effort of cleaning an area of Lowell. I put a motion on the April 9th city council agenda, which read, 'Counselor Cirillo requests the mayor establish a city councillor annual Lowell cleanup.'" the mayor establish a City Councilor annual Lowell cleanup trash tag challenge for the City Council to clean an area of Lowell. We need T-shirts to wear while we're working hard to keep Lowell clean and beautiful. We want, my want and goal is to have each of your fifth-grade classes from each of your schools design a T-shirt for one of the City Councilors, the City Manager, and the Assistant City Manager. This works out well, as there are eleven of us in their eleven schools with fifth-grade students who can participate. If this is acceptable, I am happy to come and speak to your students regarding what the goal is. My goal is to have your fifth-grade students not only participate in a wonderful art project, but also learn about keeping Lowell clean. The City Council wants to be a positive influence in promoting a clean Lowell. The City Manager, Assistant City Manager, and City Councilors will randomly pick a school, and when matched up, we will notify your school which one of us will be wearing your design. I would like to know ASAP if your fifth-grade students will be joining in this fun and exciting project, as I would request your schools designed by May thirty-first. There is only one rule to the design of the T-shirt, and that is to have fun. All of my very best, City Councilor Karen Cirillo.'" So since we are, we are having our Lowell cleanup day for our counselors, I thought that it would be a fun and wonderful way to get our students involved, and I thought the fifth-grade students would have a great time with this project of designing T-shirts. And, and that would get them involved in learning more about keeping Lowell clean. So, so I look forward to the mayor going to the school committee and the superintendent of schools and requesting that this possibly be an opportunity.
You want all fifth graders to participate?
Well, there are eleven schools, and so I would like one, one T-shirt designed from each school. Yes.
And we'll get the T-shirts from?
Well, there's a, there's a place right in Lowell that, that does T-shirts.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Elliott? Hmm? We haven't got the date set. Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, thank you. Next, we have the City Council Executive Session regarding the matter of litigation namely Hoot versus, oh, I'm sorry, announcements? Will we, any announcements? Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, there is an announcement. If you just give me one second. So on tomorrow evening at six-thirty at the Rogers School, there will be a presentation regarding the proposal to redesign the end of the connector at Gorham Street. Mast dot will be here. The city is hosting the meeting, but Mast dot will be here to discuss the different proposals. One, a potential roundabout. Another is a redesign of a T at that intersection. It's important, Mast dot will be collecting comments on this for purposes of their design. As this works forward, this is the time to, to step up and let, let Mast dot know what the, what the residents feel about this very important, very dangerous intersection. It's much easier for them to assemble all of the comments during this phase, where we are not yet at twenty-five percent design. So at the city's invitation, they are going to be at the Rogers School, six-thirty PM. They will present the options and alternatives, and it's primarily to hear from the residents and from the public what their thoughts are about this redesign. It's expected to go through design through the rest of this year and possibly start next, in 2020, to, to implement this new design. So just to everyone out there, now is the time to, to come forward and to have your voice heard as to what you would like to see out there.
Madam Manager? I'm sorry, Councilor Mercia.
They did make a presentation, and it was very, very good when they did that loop, so there was no need for a Jersey barrier or anything like that, so that's my recommendation.
Yeah, they made the presentation here. We just wanted to make sure that, you know, they've been out to the public, and, and it's much harder, once it's been fifty, seventy-five percent designed, to then start changing it, so this is, we just want to let people know.
Well, I'm going to recommend that right now, because I thought it was good.
That's all.
Any further announcements? Okay. All right. Finally, we have to go into executive session regarding the matter of litigation, namely Hoot at Alvers, the city of Lowell, public discussion, which could have a detrimental effect on the city's position. I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
By Councilor Cirillo, second by Councilor Mercia. Roll call.
Councilor Kennedy.
Yes.
Councilor Leahy.
Yes.
Councilor Mercia.
Yes.
Councilor Millinazzo.
Yes.
Councilor Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaris.
Yes.
Councilor Cirillo.
Yes.
Councilor Conway.
All right. We'll adjourn.
Councilor Elliott.
Yes.
We will adjourn from the executive session. Thank you.
Do you want a man, manager? Great to see you.
[music]